We will now reconvene the regular meeting for Lompoc City Council of Tuesday, January 18th, 2022 from closed session. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ball.
Present.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Present.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Victor Vega.
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Mr. Malave, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the council met in closed session to discuss the one exposure to litigation item on the agenda, but no reportable action was taken.
Thank you. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I presented a proclamation for the celebration of Martin Luther King Day at the Dewey Center yesterday on the 17th of January. We will now do a Human Trafficking Awareness Month proclamation. If we have anybody here to receive it, please meet me there. And we will be pulling the second presentation because the individual is ill and not able to be with us tonight. So it is Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And while we don't want to talk about this, it is important that we talk about it and be proactive in dealing with it. So I have with me Anne McCarty with North County Rape Crisis Center here to receive this on behalf of those working against this, but it's something every one of us can address. Whereas human trafficking is a form of modern slavery that occurs in every state, including California, wherein victims are forced to work in various forms of labor exploitation, including but not limited to commercial sex acts and other services that are induced through force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas due to this, it's isolated and discreet nature, many individuals across the globe are unaware that trafficking exists in their communities. And whereas it is estimated that more than 40.3 million people around the world are victims of human trafficking, and whereas human trafficking victims face a cruelty that has no place in a civilized world, it is a crime that can take many forms and one that tears at our social fabric, debases our common humanity, and violates what we stand for as a country. And whereas increased education about how to identify human trafficking, along with increased knowledge of in-state resources and services for those affected by criminal exploitation, can help decrease the number of future victims. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force is committed to using all applicable laws and resources for investigating human trafficking and prosecuting those engaged in it. And whereas the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force has worked diligently to bring awareness to the fact that human trafficking occurs closer to home than one might think, that California ranks number one in the country for reported human trafficking cases, and that Santa Barbara County is home to hundreds of survivors of trafficking and exploitation. And whereas the Human Trafficking Awareness Month is an opportunity to recognize the critical role all Lompoc residents play in preventing, reporting, and educating these heinous crimes, now therefore I, Janelle Osborne, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby recognize January 2022 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in our City of Lompoc and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. Anne, thank you for being here to receive this, and we'll let you speak on this.
Can you do this without my glasses fogging up? Nope, they're going to fog up. Thank you, Mayor Osborne, and members of the city council for recognizing Human Trafficking Awareness Month. As you, as you know, my name is Anne McCarty, and I'm the Executive Director for the North County Rape Crisis and Child Protection Center. But tonight, I actually do come to you as a member of the Santa Barbara County Human Trafficking Task Force. This is actually my fourth proclamation that I've received this month, and it's been an incredible honor to stand in front of so many city officials that are recognizing the importance of this month. So I thank you for taking the time to help us get the word out about the importance of recognizing human trafficking and shining a light on it. Trafficking, no matter if it is sex trafficking or labor trafficking, does present real concerns for those of us on the front lines. Sadly, risk factors for trafficking have indeed been exasperated in recent years due to loss of income because of the pandemic, rising housing costs, et cetera. As a task force, we attack this issue from a multi-pronged approach. Having started in 2013 with a multidisciplinary coalition comprised of law enforcement, supportive service providers, and community advocates, we provide leadership, we make data-driven decisions, we provide training, public awareness and outreach to communities we serve, undertaking investigations and prosecutions, all the while supporting the survivors that we're there to help. It hasn't been easy, but the efforts have not been in vain. Because, to date, there have been 192 new human trafficking investigations in Santa Barbara County since 2017, with 183 new survivors identified. Of those, 30% were minors, with an additional 33% between the ages of 18 to 24. 45% were Santa Barbara County residents prior to trafficking, and an additional 44% were California residents, with 91% of all of them being sex trafficking. The task force is also taking on, and is always a work in progress, but as we continue to move along, we're still expanding our work to support those who are being labor trafficked as well. People often ask, how do we help? My first answer is always going to be to educate. Educate yourself on what the red flags of human trafficking are. And if anyone, any of you sitting up there or anyone in the audience, is ever interested in any prevention awareness trainings, please contact a member of our task force. We can be located fairly easily by contacting the Sheriff's Department, contacting the Lompoc Police Department, and asking for someone, asking for the human trafficking detective. By calling the Rape Crisis Center, you can always call me at the center, or call our hotline, or you can call the District Attorney's Office. But one thing that's also happening this month is we are doing a Vigil for Freedom, the task force. I'm going to give these to the city clerk. If she would share those with you. It's coming up on Thursday night, virtually 5:30 PM. You can log on and register. And it's just to shine a light on the issue of human trafficking, to support our survivors. And we hope that you can make it. And once again, we thank you for this acknowledgement, and appreciate all that you do to support us. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. It's the moment we've all been waiting for. Well, at least I know Dean Albro is. The swearing-in ceremony for our city manager. You're more than welcome to bring them up with you for the swearing-in.
My son Cole, my daughter Colby. And my wife Karen.
Okay. So do you want to stand next to the mic so that your swearing-in is?
Stand back here.
There you go. Why don't you guys come over here so that you're next to him? There you go. Okay. Are you ready?
Sure.
Raise your right hand.
I, Dean Albro.
I, Dean Albro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support the laws and policies.
I will support the laws and policies.
Of the City of Lompoc.
Of the City of Lompoc.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties and responsibilities.
The duties and responsibilities.
Of the Office of City Manager.
Of the Office of City Manager.
For the City of Lompoc.
For the City of Lompoc.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations. So Mr. Albro, before you sit down, if you'd like to say a few words about stepping into the role or your plans, anything you'd like?
I think I kind of said that before. It's definitely a pleasure and an honor. My first two weeks, I've been reading so much. I've been meeting with so many people, so many things that I'm working on, and I'm super excited about all our movement forward, and I'm super excited working with everybody. And it's definitely a pleasure and honor. Thank you.
Awesome. And she needs a signature. That was the other thing. Anne. And we owe you a cake at some point. All right. You now have your first official city manager report.
Push the button. Thank you. I wanted to thank the AYSO for the tournament they did at the All-Stars down at River Bend Park. They did a great job. I was really impressed with how many people showed up, all the volunteers, the city employees that helped put it together. I want to say thank you to them for utilizing our parks and getting people in our community to come out and play ball, and go to restaurants and hotels and spend money in our community. It's really awesome to see that. I also wanted to take a moment to introduce Kristi Donnelly. She'll be our Acting Management Service Director. I also wanted to say something about her. I want to congratulate her. She's been the lead in our audit, and this year we got one audit finding. That audit finding was for correcting prior periods, so really we had no audit findings in this year. That is truly an accomplishment. That doesn't happen very often. Matter of fact, I've been doing this for 31 years in her chair, and that was the first time it's ever happened. So just wanted to congratulate her and welcome her aboard. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. All right. We will now open the floor for public comment on consent calendar items. If you would like to speak on a consent calendar item, you are more than welcome to come to the podium. You have three minutes. If you would like to call in, the number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, radio, or computer. Again, the number to call is 805-875-8201. Did we have any written communication on consent calendar, Madam Clerk?
Sorry. Yes, ma'am. We received an email from Mr. Grill, Mr. David Grill. It was delivered to council. It was put on the website and is out front.
And one from Mr. Fink as well?
Yes, also. Also provided to council staff and placed out on the front and on our website.
Okay. Thank you. While we wait to see if there are any phone calls on consent calendar, I will go ahead and read the purpose of consent calendar. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one call and no one rise, we will close consent calendar public comment and bring it back to council. Councilmember Starbuck.
Mr. Albro, real quick, on item four, are these projects in the CIP, are these projects that we are going to assign and maybe co-do with ARPA funds?
Well, they'll no longer be ARPA funds. We drew that down into the general fund. This was the surpluses that we had left over in the general fund that we're moving into the capital improvement special revenue fund. We have no plans yet approved. These are all ones that we'll bring back to you at council, either a special workshop or through the budget process.
So this will all be CIP items then?
Yes, yes. It'll all be one-time expenditures for capital improvements.
Great answer. Thank you, sir.
Councilmember Cordova.
Also on number four, just for clarification, we're saying that the $4 million will be going towards the capital improvement or capital development special revenue fund. Is this a new fund?
No, that's really where we put all our impact fees and all, any other capital development that we do. This is new in the sense that it's not an impact fee, and it would be one that, like I said, that we can work on as a group and bring back together.
So do we have a timeframe? And I don't know if I need to pull this item because I did have a few questions on it. So I don't know, Madam Mayor, if you feel...
As long as the questions don't lead to a discussion, getting clarity is enough. If it leads to a discussion, then we do need to pull it.
Okay. So do we have an idea to timeframe of when we will decide? Because we can say that we're going to put this money there, but it does our staff no good if we never go back and touch it and we never go back. And so, and I know things tend to take on a life of their own. So how long? What is, I would love to see a timeline of when this is coming back so we can make those decisions.
I can give you some general direction of when we'll be bringing back some of these projects. I know we're going to be bringing back some in March. We'll also be bringing them back probably May or so or April. I'm hoping that we can get this, this $4 million, you know, have a plan of action, but they can stay on as long as we want. Capital improvements can stay as long as you guys want, or you want to direct us to bring back stuff. This is an option.
Okay. And then for clarification, one more clarification. We're doing $4 million to that fund, but I know when I read the staff report, it also talked about $4 million going to the general reserve.
It's coming out of the general reserves and going into the special revenue fund.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Yes, I'd like to see if we can pull item number two for a separate vote, since we were, we didn't have a unanimous decision last time on it.
So we can pull it and do a vote right after consent? Okay. So we'll pull that for a separate vote?
Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions? All right. So I need a motion to vote on items one and three through five.
I'll move.
Thank you, Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll second.
And thank you, Councilmember Ball, for the second. So we will vote on this. And that passes 5-0. And then I need a motion to vote on item two on the consent calendar. Councilmember Vega, do you want to make the motion to vote on item two?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we vote on item number two.
All righty. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right. So it's been moved and seconded, and let's vote. And that passes 3-2. All right. There are no staff presentations, so we'll move on to general oral communications. This is for items not currently on our agenda that are of city matters. You have three minutes maximum. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC, or radio. The floor is now open.
Deb Andrews, Lompoc. Liberate Lompoc from unconstitutional mandates. Facts matter. Testimony from Governor Newsom's tribunal included from the Chief Health Officer for Los Angeles County, Dr. Muntu Davis testified, Newsom set quotas for county health officials to manufacture COVID-19 cases and fatalities. Dr. Davis also testified the COVID agenda was to get people to wear masks, get them to take vaccines that might sicken or kill them and get them dependent on government support. The military tribunal convicted our governor of a number of crimes, including child sex crimes and treason. His execution date is set for January 24th. Preparing for the Nuremberg Trials regarding COVID, Dr. Wolfgang Wobarg found that drug companies used batches within batches to try out what kind of vaccine doses are needed to best kill people or best maim them. Inescapable evidence of premeditation. Clear violations of Nuremberg Code, Article 6, Section 3. In no case should a collective agreement or consent of a community leader substitute for an individual's informed consent. Leaders should be aware that mandating masks on citizens is considered a war crime. Masks or any other medical intervention must remain voluntary. On January 15th, 2022, the International Common Law Court of Justice issued their guilty verdict against Big Pharma, governments, and church leaders for medical genocide, mass murder, and crimes against humanity. Arrests will be made worldwide. Declare Lompoc a mandate-free city in which each citizen takes personal responsibility for their own health and determines what initiatives are in their personal best interest.
There is no clapping or booing during any public comments. Did we have any written general comments other than the ones already read in?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Seeing no one call, we'll close general oral communications and bring it back to the agenda. Next on the agenda, we have appointments. The first is we will go through the appointments for council members to external agencies for calendar year of 2022. And we will begin with Communify. Communify is a countywide social service agency supporting public support for those needed, such as Head Start Centers, Rethinking, Senior Services, and Family Services. Currently, Councilmember Ball is serving, and Councilmember Ball, would you like to continue serving?
I'd be happy to.
All right.
Second.
All right. If they're happy to continue serving, I don't know that we need another vote. It's just a confirmation, but I appreciate your excitement and support. The next is Liaison to the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, and a current individual serving is Victor Vega. Councilmember Vega, do you wish to continue serving?
I will.
Awesome. Thank you. The next is the NCPA, and currently I, and Tank. It's two organizations, but Tank goes in hand in hand with our Northern California Power Agency, and Tank is Transmission Agency of Northern California, for those of you new to all of this. I am your current appointee, and I'm happy to continue serving that. Our alternate is Councilmember Ball. Are you happy to continue serving? Great. We do have some changes we do need to make on the staff level. We need to remove our prior city manager, Mr. Troop, from the list, and Tekan Singh from both NCPA and Tank. I will move to do so, and can I have a second?
I'll give you a second.
All right. Thank you. And we'll do a quick vote on that. And that passes 5-0. I checked with staff, and we didn't need to do alternates at the moment. If we do end up needing an alternate, Mr. Berry will let us know, and we can add at a later time. All right. Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, I currently serve as your appointee, and our alternate is Councilmember Cordova. I am willing to step down from this if anyone else is interested in serving this. It says that it meets regularly on the third Thursday. It actually meets every other month. It only meets six times a year, not 12 times. So I'm letting that, anyone interested in serving on it is welcome to let me know if it's something you're interested in before we move on. Oh, look at all, everybody, the hands shoot right up. All right. I will continue serving on that. Councilmember Gilda, are you okay continuing to be the alternate?
Thank you. And there's that second again that we didn't need. And then we have the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. I currently serve as your representative and will happily continue. And our alternate is Councilmember Cordova. Any wish to change?
Seeing the head shake, no. We will move on to the Breeze Political Advisory Committee, PAC. Our Councilmember Vega, you currently serve. Is there any desire to change?
No, I'll continue.
Awesome. Thank you. Our multi-jurisdictional solid waste task group is currently Councilmember Starbuck, and our alternate is Councilmember Cordova. Any desire to, oh, thank you. And I'll second that, right? All right. I do believe that we had an adjustment to Western Area of San Ynez River Valley Groundwater Basin earlier last year, which was Councilmember Ball.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Did you skip over Home for Good?
I did. You're so, thank you for catching that. I was rushing through this. Home for Good is currently Councilmember Ball. And would you consider staying on? Awesome. And Councilmember Vega, you're the alternate? No problem? Great. All right. To number nine, the Western Area of the San Ynez River Valley Groundwater Basin. I believe Jeremy Ball was appointed mid-year last year, and Kristen Worthley is our staff alternate. Any changes? No? Good. Awesome. Item 10, Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens Area Agency on Aging. Councilmember Ball, you are currently serving on the advisory council? All right. Continue serving. And number 11 is the California Municipal Utilities Association's Legislative Committee, and that is currently myself as your appointee, and your alternate is Councilmember Ball. I'm okay with continuing. I got a head nod from Councilmember Ball. And the Santa Barbara County City Selection Committee is comprised of all the mayors from each city in the county to ratify appointments of city representatives to LAFCO, Air Pollution Control District, and the Santa Barbara County Area of Governments, and that is currently myself. So that has been cleaned up. Any other questions, concerns from the city clerk? Head is nodding no. All right. We will then go on to appointments for Mayor Pro Tem appointment for calendar year 2022. And given everyone up here has served except our newest member, Councilmember Ball, I would like to offer it first to him if he is interested in it.
Does it include a pay raise?
None whatsoever. You actually lose even more money. Yeah.
All right. Name tag. Okay. An upgraded name tag. That's great. Yeah, sure. Absolutely. I'd be happy to.
Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions by our nominee or anybody else? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes 5-0, and welcome to your year of filling in. All right. Item number eight, Adoption of Resolution Number 6467, Prince's 22, Non-Summary Vacation of Public Access Right-of-Way Alley's at Arbor Square Apartments between Pine Avenue and Oak Avenue and between G Street and F Street. And we have Craig Dearling to make the presentation for us.
Thank you. So this item involves adoption of a resolution to vacate or give up the public access right-of-way of the two alleys that run through the Arbor Square Apartments between Pine Avenue and Oak Avenue and between G Street and F Street. The background for this is the Arbor Square Apartments' property owner requested the city vacate those, the public access easement rights of those alleys because the owner wanted to install gates to limit general public access and just allow access to residents, emergency services, and public utilities. So the alleys would continue to serve public utilities, and there'd be no change in utility access or service other than needing to enter the gate code. The staff followed the Streets and Highways Code procedure for going through this process, and it involved going to the Planning Commission, which happened in October. The Planning Commission found that the vacation of the public access easement of the alleys is in conformance with the general plan, and also that it is... and also that it is exempt from SEQA. Then the second main part of the process is tonight to hold a public hearing, receive evidence from all interested parties, and then after due deliberation, find that the right-of-way for public access is unnecessary for present or prospective public use. In consideration of fiscal impacts, the property owner is responsible for the payment of all associated costs, both for the going through this process as well as providing the necessary access for fire, police, city utilities, et cetera. And another consideration is as the city vacates these alleys for public access, the maintenance of the pavement would then fall on the property owner rather than on the city. So the city will realize a little bit of savings due to reduced pavement maintenance. The staff's recommendation is to hold the public hearing and adopt this resolution, 646722, vacating the right-of-way for public access but maintaining the easement for public utilities or provide alternate direction to staff.
Any questions for staff? Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you, Craig. I guess my biggest question here is, what are we going to do with trash? Are we going to have access for solid waste to go in and do this or is it going to be relocated or?
Yeah, apparently there are a number of other similar complexes in town that they have a gate code and go in and pick up trash.
So, no big deal, just like if police had to respond, fire, solid waste has a key code and they'll go in and do normal.
Correct.
Any other questions before we open for public comment? Thank you, Craig. We will now open the floor for public comment on item eight. The number to call is 805-875-8201. And remember to mute your TV, PC or radio. If you're in the room and would like to make a comment on this, please come forward to the microphone. Madam Clerk, did we have any written communication?
No ma'am, nothing.
Thank you.
I just believe that it's discriminatory against the disabled because there's a lot of people in there that won't get the necessary care. You know, the ambulance coming in in time. I've seen people die without Narcan. I've had to do CPR on people. I don't think it's right to close that. I don't know, I just think it's, it's not going to solve anything. It's going to be more of a nuisance. People are going to be breaking it. It's not going to solve any of the gain problems. I live there. They don't take care of anything. You keep it up to code. So I just believe that it's going to be harder for people to get medical care. And I believe it's discriminatory against the disabled because there's a lot of disabled that need the ambulance to get in there quickly. I believe it'll cause, you know, deaths.
Thank you. Seeing no one call in, we will, oh, got another? Come forward, please.
Hello, City Council. I represent the ownership.
Oh, thank you.
My firm, Pacific Rim Architects. My name is Ulysses Araujo. And I just want to thank you and I wanted to make it as a record, I would like to thank the staff that helped us with all this process. The Arbor Square was very dilapidated facilities and our clients hired us to make a, revamp the facilities. And security was the most important thing. That's why we wanted to vacate the alleys, to provide the gates. And I'd like to thank all the way from Seth Dressler, that he was our front person on the front desk, Mr. Greg Stones, Lori Spears, Deena Odena, Paske Fouse, I don't know if her last name is pronounced correctly, and Mr. Craig Dearling. At least those were the people I dealt directly with them. And just to make a very quick note, all these projects are funded and it's just paperwork. You know how bureaucracy works. The day we were supposed to get the permits is when they shut down the city hall. But we were able to talk with the staff because once we got the permits, then the bank could release the money. So that was a big, big deal. And I just want to thank everybody because although it happened two years ago, we were able to finish. And if we vacate the alleys and everything goes, this is pretty much our final involvement. And I would like to thank all of you.
Thank you for that. All right, anyone else wanting to speak on this matter? All right, seeing no one else rise and no phone calls come in, we will close public comment on this and bring it back to council. Councilmember Cordova.
So just to confirm, they will be installing gates then to close off those alleyways?
So the gates are installed, but they're open currently. They aren't closing the gates yet because this process hasn't been fully approved. But they, they did a lot of site upgrades over the past two years or so.
Okay, and I know that you mentioned that there's other city projects that have this also. But, so we've done an evaluation then, our, our, our city staff has done an evaluation as far as our fire department being able to easily access and get in in the event of an emergency. I know that we still have the street sides as well. But I want to make sure that that's something that we've already looked at as well and that our city fire department and police department have full access to enter in the event of an emergency or in the event of any kind of situation that would require law enforcement or fire.
Yeah, Deena coordinated that.
Good evening, Council. Thank you for asking that question. Obviously, that hits close to home for us. We want to make sure we have good access. And it was, it actually hit pretty hard to the contractor because when I went over, I was contacted by someone that was on the first floor and they were concerned about their access and I took that very seriously. I spoke to them. I saw what the changes were and that we're not going to be appropriate amount of gates to open. All the gates are in-between and clustered where the normal walkway is between each set of apartments. So there's two buildings, there'd be a gate. There's also gates that swing outward, just like normal exits that go to both sides of where those automatic fences. So once those are closed, there's still egress gates. So we actually added four additional gates than what the original proposal was because of that concern. And they had already broken out all the concrete because they were going to eliminate all those gates. And I said, absolutely no way. I don't, I want to make sure we can get in there very timely. Also, at the contractor owner's expense, we had Knox boxes put at every single one of those gates. So they're all the same key. We can override them. So even if there's a power failure, we can get in. Now, we have to let the ambulance in, right? So that is, that is one thing. It's our Knox box that is keyed towards fire. But we do have the path of travel on those egresses and they had to repour concrete even wider than it was before. So I hope that addresses it. That was what we were trying to do. I feel it meets the intent of the code.
Okay, and then also, I too had the question that Councilmember Starbuck had with regards to trash and sanitation, trash pickup and sanitation. So I just want to make sure that later on it doesn't become where our trash trucks can't get in and then it becomes an issue and then we end up seeing trash cans in the front side of the buildings because it's easier for us to just pass through and pick up. That's not what I want to see. I want to make sure that trash pickup is in the alleyways and that that's how it stays.
Yeah, our solid waste as well as the other utilities were coordinated on that topic. And they, like we mentioned, they do that at a few other places and that is the plan. They have an access code already and as soon as the gates close, they should be using that.
And Councilmember Starbuck.
Ms. Paskey, did I hear you correctly say that AMR does not have access?
Thank you for asking that. AMR does not have access to our fire Knox boxes. That's a specialized key that's locked on each of our apparatus. They can however, by the management staff, have a personal PIN code. It's a four-digit code to open each one of those gates as a workaround.
Who coordinates that? Management, fire, AMR? I mean, how do we make sure? I mean, this lady back here has made a valid point suddenly about no ambulances being able to get in.
So I have not heard of that. That's the first I've heard. But we actually have access to it, AMR supervisor. I'm happy to make that bridge and reach out to make sure that that procedure on their end is ready.
No, I think the AMR aspect's far more important than the solid waste at this point, you know? I mean, I didn't know this and it's, yeah, I, I think that's something that should really be top priority for you. I mean, the medical help in a restricted area and as many people are in there.
So one of the things we do on these different accesses is we have our mobile, you know, data computers that are on. AMR has similar in theirs and the dispatchers have private notes and they can go on to their MDCs and tell them what that, that code is while they're in route. So that would be the workaround. So they'll see it. They know where they're responding. They know what unit they're going to. And by the way, here's, and they'll even say it over the radio, please check your, your monitor or your MDC for details.
Yeah, so regional dispatch and our dispatch and everybody else is going to have to let AMR know what the secret PIN code is to get in at that point and, and everybody with a scanner too.
No, you won't see it on the, well, you can't see it because it's on their, it's only on their computer screen. It's not pronounced over the radio. That's the safety feature.
Ah, yeah, I mean, that's, I think it's important, probably requires a lot of attention out of management and obviously, you know, public safety.
Ms. Fouse, I appreciate you offering to make that contact if you would work in coordination with the management and maybe just send us a memo saying that that's been complete so that we, we know it's been done. That would help us.
I'll be on that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more questions, concerns? All right, seeing none, we will entertain a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation and I'd like to make sure that we did get this little medical thing fixed.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? All right, let's vote. And that passes five zero. Thank you Battalion Chief Fouse for taking care of that tonight. All right, item number nine. The adoption of Resolution Number 6471, parentheses 22, restructuring the Human Resource Division of the City Administration Department to a new separate Human Resource Department, creating the position of Assistant City Manager, amending the City Classification and Compensation Plan for Management Supervisory and Confidential Employees to include an Assistant City Manager job classification and salary ranges and to delete the Deputy City Manager job classification and salary ranges, request for position allocation change in the City Administration Department budget as requested by Councilmember Vega. And we have our new city manager, Mr. Albro, to present.
Sorry for how long that was. You almost said it all, huh? Like you said, this was a request by Councilmember Vega on December 7th to bring back and re-establish an Assistant City Manager and also re-establish the Human Resource Department from a division to an apartment. Just a little history, in 2010, the Human Resource Department was eliminated and put underneath the City Administrator, now the City Manager's office. The intention was to save money, of course. But the idea was that they were going to contract out all the work that that director was doing to the attorneys. Today, it's really not like that. We, a lot of the negotiations we do for grievances and labor disputes and MOUs is all done mainly by in-house staff. We occasionally reach out for attorneys when we get in some that's a little bit more complicated that we can't handle. But it's mainly in-house. And that's good. It provides a quicker route for us. It increases morale with the unions. We get things done quickly here and we don't normally have to send them outside, but occasionally we do, like I said. It's very complex. We've had a lot of changes in the budget. There's going to be a lot of stuff coming to you as council. It'd be nice to have the extra staffing to look at capital improvements, budget goals and objectives and our priorities. We have a lot of priorities that we need to work on. So my recommendation, based upon your direction, is that we re-establish it. I also recommend that, that we eliminate the Deputy City Manager position. That job's been vacant since 2018. My recommendation is that we use those appropriations that we put in the budget for that position, for this position. So there'll be no changes to the budget. And I think it would better align with the duties that are being performed now with the recommendations here. And that's all I have. If you have any questions.
Councilmember Vega.
Dean, if you could elaborate on the Deputy City Manager position, you know, on the, it's remained vacant for a while. And the appropriations that are involved here and how it transitions into a saving, so to speak, or is it a savings or is it an additional cost for the position we're requesting to open up here? Okay, so obviously with the city manager coming in as you are, we were looking for a success story in some, some way to make sure that we're successful. We're guaranteeing success for City of Lompoc. So that was the reason that we put that in there because we heard from the previous city manager that he wished he always had one. So at this time, since we're doing a little bit of stretching on the budget and kind of improvising, maybe you could elaborate on the cost savings aligned with that elimination of that position that's really not filled right now?
Yeah, the Deputy City Manager was a job that really didn't align with the duties that was being performed. If you look at all the cities from the Choy County, I looked at every single city. I couldn't find one that wasn't a structure that was a city manager and Assistant City Manager. Yeah, but we don't, the Deputy City Manager job really isn't one that matches, the comp doesn't match. And it's not a position that really, I don't think it's the right position for the city. And the savings is we haven't filled it for six months here and we'll succession plan to try and build behind the HR department and try and build a succession plan. So right now, we really don't have one. So, yeah, I don't know if that helps or not.
So the impact as far as, if I could ask, on the budget, if you could kind of?
There'd be no impact on the budget. The appropriations were in there for the Deputy City Manager position. Like I said, it's been vacant for a number of years. So that's already been allocated out to all the divisions. It is an allocated position. About 40% of it goes to the general fund, so majority of it gets allocated out.
So there's no fiscal impact as long as we do kind of the elimination?
Not for the 2123 budget.
Okay.
In the future, it'll probably be between 20 and 30,000 of the general fund.
Now, the benefits of having the city manager, Assistant City Manager to you in your view and immediately, you know, moving forward with negotiations and things that we do and the Human Resources Manager usually takes part in, how is that going to benefit us and benefit your position and benefit the city?
Well, the succession plan would be to try and get that department to be, you know, build it up and have an Assistant City Manager that could help me with a lot of the priorities in our city. Right now, like I said earlier, I'm just doing so much reading. I'm seeing so many things that we need to work on. The, the projects are large and I'm trying to get funding from others, you know, like council member superintendents and, I mean, county, the county, the state. I'm trying to get grant proposals and they have guidelines that they need you to do. And they become very cumbersome. That is a lot of work, a lot of reading. And it's almost impossible for one person to do that. But, you know, I'm here to work. If that's what you want, I'm willing to do that too. But it would speed things up. There's a lot of staff reports that I tried to get stuff to council in January and I had, I had to punt because I got a bunch of grand jury reports. I got other reports that I needed to do and I just ran out of time.
Got you, got you. One more question if I could. Human resources, how does, like you said, we're, we're going to restructure and we don't have a person named yet for whatever we're doing. We're just trying to make this position, you know, something that's funded. Is there a benefit here and there to what we're trying to do here? It looks like there's a restructuring of some of the duties.
You could try and recruit from outside. You know, that's one of the issues we're having with a lot of positions throughout the whole city. It's hard to recruit right now. There's not, there's not people out there to recruit. Our comps aren't high enough to them to come way out here. So we're doing a lot of succession planning. We're trying to build within a lot, so. That, this will help.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cordova.
So I, I'm just a little confused because I know the staff report says that on the December 7th council meeting, that the request was made by Councilmember Vega to, to bring forth the Assistant City Manager position and duties of a Human Resource Manager. But I went back and I reviewed the meeting. At no point in time did Councilmember Vega ever say anything about reconstructing an HR department. He only specifically stated that he wanted to bring forth the discussion of bringing an Assistant City Manager. And then also he wanted to talk about the budget impact and what that would be like. I'm a little concerned. I'm a little concerned with this being rolled together because I would like to see an Assistant City Manager position come into play, but I'm really not, I'm really not content with rolling that position and also trying to restructure an HR position when the staff report clearly states that with the current Human Resources staff resolving majority of grievances and labor negotiations while using consulting services only when necessary, again by attorney, this has resulted in a large cost savings by utilizing existing staff and has increased morale as issues are revolved, are resolved quickly and efficiently. So that leads me to believe that the system we have right now is working because our staff is capable, we do have a Human Resources Director and they're able to resolve issues and when, if and when they do need the support, then they reach out to their legal team. By reorganizing it, it says that the department will continue with, it, it says that, you know, that they'll bring in and they'll research, we're gonna restructure the HR and make it its whole other department, but then it also says that the department would continue with current staffing and to utilize the hybrid system described above with legal consultants. So if we're gonna continue operating the same way, then why do we need to touch the HR department at all?
Well, what we're doing is we're, we're creating an Assistant City Manager, but we're still keeping the Human Resource Manager, so we're, we're taking that one position and making two out of them. And we're gonna try and succession plan and try and either recruit for either one of those positions, so we'll have an additional person to help with, with the amount of work that's being presented. And, and I'm just kinda going with the direction from our prior city manager and, and everything I'm hearing, this is what I kinda thought everybody was meaning and I can, but I can go another direction if you like.
Yes, I just want the council to consider that because, again, and I'm not speaking for Councilmember Vega, I just went back and looked at the, because this is not what I recalled our discussion was, and I went back and looked at the, I don't see a reason to restructure and change if the staff report clearly calls out that what the system we have is working, it's been a cost savings. I see the desperate need to have an Assistant City Manager. I just do not wanna hire Assistant City Manager to oversee an HR department because I don't feel, I, I wanna see an Assistant City Manager to deal with the day-to-day of what you, what is gonna hopefully make you successful in this position too. And that makes the city successful and that makes everyone, every department successful and the residents successful, so I just wanted to bring that forth. And when we're talking about, you know, succession planning, succession planning is having an Assistant City Manager that is doing that role and that duty while still having a HR Director and having the legal support underneath that, that, the report clearly calls out that, that that department is staffed. We are a full-service city, I, I, we're supposed to be conducting services to our residents in that manner and yet, over the years, we've heard, due to the, the, the financial problems that we've had, we've, we've had to eliminate a lot of positions and so we've heard a lot of, we don't have staff, we can't do that because we don't have staff. I don't wanna hear that anymore. I would love to get to a point where we start carving our way out of that and I don't wanna see a city manager, as our prior city manager used to say, well, I had to go out there and do code enforcement. I don't want that for you and so I just, I, I have, you know, I have my concerns about this and I wanted to bring that to light and have the council consider that, that I don't think that we need to restructure an HR department and roll it in to an Assistant City Manager. We just need an Assistant City Manager, period, in my opinion.
So if I understand you correctly, what this does is create a combined position of Assistant City Manager slash HR Director to begin with, with the goal being, as the positions are identified in HR to backfill, it would become Assistant City Manager, Human Resource Director at a future point and you would come forward and ask for that change when that transition was ready.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's because, like I was saying, it's, it's difficult right now to recruit people that are at that level.
Right, so it's much like how we used to have an Assistant City Manager slash Economic Development Director. It's a way to fill the position, get the assistance going, identify the best structure for the Human Resource Department and transition into having a full-time ACM, but not, not have an ACM.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we go to public comment? Councilmember Ball.
I don't know if there's a easy way to answer this, but should we move forward with this and restructure in the, the HR department? Since we're admitting that we've had great success there, we had efficiencies, et cetera, will the restructuring change our approach to staying efficient, staying proactive? Maybe you can speak to that a little bit.
It's like Christie Donnelly, she's done a great job with, trying to take on the role of the financial stuff. It's succession planning where we're trying to teach her how to take over different functions and the same thing that we, we wanna do with the HR division is we're gonna have to fill behind and, and teach that person how to be that HR Manager, Director, and then that, that'll free up that opportunity for that person to spend more time being just the Assistant City Manager.
Thank you. One more question and just, just go through as much as you can remember off the top of your head. Councilwoman Cordova mentioned this, that we are a full-service city. A lot of people think, well, that just means that we have police and fire and the necessities of sorts, but maybe just remind the community in layman's terms, what is a full-service city? What is, under your purview, what is management have oversight in this city?
A lot.
Talk to me about it.
Police, fire, parks, rec, library, but also all the utilities, water, electric, solid waste, wastewater, although we also have CDBG, we have fleet funds, I mean, it's, we're full service, we provide everything in-house here. That, that's a lot of reading.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Cordova.
So just for clarification, because I've heard this twice now, we keep saying that we need to backfill HR. So is the intent here then to move the HR Director into the position of Assistant City Manager?
That, that's an option. That's something I'm gonna have to evaluate. I, I don't wanna get into who we're picking or that. I, I would just wanna say that that is our goal, is to try and succession plan.
I think it's so vague that the public has the right to know, when we say I don't wanna get into that, that means I don't wanna let you know that that is our plan. And so I just, if that's the plan, then say it. I have no problem with that, but then spell out the plan, but, but if, but if the true plan is to bring in an Assistant City Manager to assist the city manager in their daily tasks, which we desperately need in this city, then that should be the plan, not to underhandedly promote or, or position someone into an upgrade and then, and then, and then have a position where we now don't have a stable HR department, which your report just stated that there's a stable HR department and that we're doing good. So I, I don't have a problem with, I, I just would like to see the actual plan rather than trying to make something look like what it's not.
I just wanna remind the council that the, there's a difference between the council's purview and the city manager's purview, so the council tonight is deciding whether to create a new position at City Hall and then it's the city manager's purview to decide who to hire for those positions. So to ask the city manager who he will hire is not really something that the council should be asking about because that's within the prerogative and the authority of the, of the city manager. If the council is concerned about creating the position leading to something the council's not gonna like, well, then maybe the council should vote to not create the position or ask for a different item to come back.
To comment on what you're saying, I agree that we need to make that an independent position, but my, with the staff report, my goal is to try and succession plan to that point. I don't think we can just jump to it. I wish we could, but if you wanna give me that direction, that'll be, I'll, I'll take that, that'd be fine.
Okay, seeing no further questions for staff, we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to call in, the number to call is eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. The floor is now open. Were there any written communications on this item?
Yes, ma'am, from Mr. Ron Fink, there was one email received, it was given to council, to staff, as well as the public out front and on our website.
Thank you. Again, the number to call is eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one. This is item number nine that you may speak to. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. I will either entertain a discussion or a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I'll make the motion that we accept the resolution.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And we have a second, Councilmember Cordova.
Well, I guess there's no further point. I just wanna say that I disagree with this. I think that we should have stuck to what the council request was and that was to bring forth discussion for an Assistant City Manager position. At no point in time did the council ever discuss on December seventh, a reorganization of HR and I think that, that this is wrong.
All right. Any further questions or discussions before we vote? Seeing none, let's vote. And that passes for one. All right, we will now move on to written communications outside those that we've already discussed.
Nothing.
Thank you. You have the final oral communications for anything in the city purview is two minutes. You may call in at eight zero five, eight seven five, eight two zero one, eight zero five, eight seven one, eight two zero one. Floor is now open, you have two minutes.
Hi, my name's Stephanie Sausado, I'm a District Three representative and I'm just introducing myself, more so to Starbuck, Councilwoman Starbuck, to potentially be a commissioner for the Parks and Recs Commission. I have a AA and a bachelor's in recreational management and I've been in the City of Lompoc for ten years and I've been running youth programs and community programs as a YMCA department head for eleven years, so I feel like I can bring some of that experience to help potentially generate revenue so we can put it back into our parks and recreational facilities. My second hat is as a youth department head. We sent in a communication written to the council back in December seventh, talking about, kinda like the updates, the ways we're doing, so I just wanted to highlight again the Horizon Program that we do every summer. It's for a program for underserved youth and at-risk youth that potentially could be sucked into youth violence or youth activity that's not so recommended and we were able to serve fourteen full-time individuals this summer and we had several partners like the Lompoc Community Garden and Allen Hancock College that came in and talked about leadership development and self-confidence. We had peer speakers come in and talk about their journey to their careers, some of them had college, some of them didn't, to just show that kids could have a horizon even if they didn't go to college, so quote unplug for Horizon Program. So I just wanted to put that out there, that due to all of our partnerships, it was a very successful summer and that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Seeing no one else rise and no one phone in, we will close oral communications and bring it back to council for comments and meeting reports. I'll start with Councilmember Vega.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Cordova.
I know that Councilmember Starbuck had asked for this before with regards to the status of the enterprise funds and then we were told that it was gonna come in January and so I'm just wondering when we're gonna actually see that.
You, you can't present, but you can tell us when you'll be coming back.
Okay, so we will, we will be bringing a, a update on the budget at an next council meeting and we can address that at that time.
Thank you. And then I know that the review of the Lompoc Municipal Code was something that is now a year old that I had discussed and, and it was adopted by the council and I have yet to receive any kind of update on that as to what was discussed and adopted by council a year ago, so I'm not sure. It's, it's on here, it's on the list of upcoming agenda items, but there's no date as to when that will be addressed.
Councilmember Cordova? I have a list of items that, two of which, we're getting staff reports ready on that, so things will be coming back. I do apologize for the delay.
I know that it says February twenty-two for the time clocks, I just wanna remind you guys that that is going on three years now since we have been told that we will get a report as to why our employees cannot clock in and use a digital time clock.
Okay, Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
All right, Councilmember Ball.
Just a couple of quick things, as of about a week ago, if you're paying attention to county representation, it kind of switched, the new third district is now represented and represents most of Lompoc City and that's Supervisor Joan Hartman. Had a opportunity to meet with her last week and I'm very hopeful that we can find new ways to create some pathways for our community and collaborate and potentially use our combined resources in ways that we haven't yet thought of that could benefit our community, so I'm very hopeful. She is, I believe they're gonna be opening up some office hours here in Lompoc and we'll update you as soon as we have more information on that. And then last thing, there was a wonderful Martin Luther King event yesterday at the Dwee Center as the mayor had mentioned, she gave them a proclamation. It was wonderful to see that celebration, see our community come together. They had a very successful vaccination event, event there, I believe they had eighty adults and forty children that were vaccinated, so that's a success story in my book and that's all I've got to report.
Thank you. I attended the Santa Barbara County Area Government's Ad Hoc Committee on Broadband and Moving Forward on the Regional Program. I attended the Elected Leaders on Homelessness to, to see where we're at on the countywide issues and they are making huge progress with lots of funding coming in. Lompoc was the first to do Home Key, but Galita has just received funds and is looking to purchase the largest Home Key hotel renovation in Galita, so we may have shown them how to do it, but they are now doing bigger areas and other areas. And as Councilmember Ball said, I attended the Martin Luther King Celebration and I wanna thank all of those committee members for organizing it, as well as the participants and, and the booths that were there and for all of our community who came out and attended. Despite COVID, everybody was really good and wore their masks and, and they took temperatures as we entered and they had the vaccine clinic going on at the same time, which had a huge response, I believe. They said nearly eighty kids may have been vaccinated, so that's huge for us. I have a council request. I know last year we all agreed that we needed to do a riverbed cleanup again and that we would also have an agreement to do maintenance with it after meeting with our new Board of Supervisor representation, who's also the chair. She has committed to bringing forth a planned partnership from the Board of Supervisors, so I would like to make the council request that we start the plan on our end so we know what our ask needs to be, so my request is to begin planning for riverbed cleanup and I need additional support on that. Councilmember Cordova.
Mayor?
Yes.
Is that for an agenda item to come back with a report on what we need to do?
Yep, please.
I'll give you the third.
Thank you. All right. Couple of public announcements, given the Human Trafficking Awareness Month, there is a session being presented on the twentieth and the twentieth by Behavioral Wellness, so if you go to the county Public Health Department Behavioral Wellness site, you can sign up for it. It is training and it is free and if you're in the public health industry, you can get credits, but if you're a citizen, you're more than welcome to attend. The information's there, it's on the twentieth and the twenty-seventh and it is free. Our library is having a challenge for the community to read For a Better World and that is ongoing through the thirty-first of this month and you can go to this city website and go to the public library page and get more information on that. And so the ask is to read a hundred books from the participants and the ongoing a thousand books before kindergarten challenge is, is still going on as well. We have some great training going on at our pool and they're ongoing training for the lifeguards. lifeguards is happening on February 12th, 13th, and 19th, with a pre-course on the 11th. The course cost is $200, which is refunded if you become a lifeguard at the Aquatic Center. That's on our homepage, as well as adding swim instructors, so that is ongoing on the 28th, 29th, and 31st of January. There is no cost for that, and again, that information is on our Parks and Rec page. Also, for those of you in the community that fundraised through our fireworks program, permits to sell safe and sane fireworks are limited to six sale stands, and that application window opened on the 15th, so be sure and get your applications filed by 5:00 p.m. on February 1st, and you can either do it online at the city website or go to Fire Station 51, the main fire station, to get an application. And last but not least, something that's really important to Lompoc as far as the county funding and overseeing our needs, is the point-in-time count for homelessness. That occurs on February 23rd, 2022. You can go to the county website at countyofsb.org/housing/home.sbc and sign up for it. It happens from 5:30 a.m. till 8:30 a.m. They do not count the riverbed, but they do count those present in the community, so it's really important to us, because it identifies how much they put forward in funding on it to address the situation, so please ask those of you interested in supporting this to sign up and participate. I've participated every year since I got elected, and it is not only important, but it's also educational. You really begin to understand the homeless issue and how many are local residents and how many individuals are desperate for assistance. All right, thank you all for coming tonight. We will adjourn to our next Lompoc City Council meeting on February 1st, 2022, at 6:30 p.m.